Good evening, welcome to the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals. I have a statement that Town Council has asked all boards to read and to the record. And this is just basically to let everybody know that this is being recorded and will be for public broadcast on the Needham Channel. I don't think I have to say anything more than that.
Well stated.
Thank you, it's very good. So first on our agenda is the minutes from the June 20th meeting. Have you read the minutes?
Yes, would you entertain a motion to...
I'd love to entertain a motion for the... to accept the minutes from the June meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, minutes have been approved. First up is an application by Amit Schwartz, Anita Levin Schwartz, the Schwartzes, relating to 20 Alderbrook Lane. And they've applied for a special permit under Section 1.46 and other sections of the bylaw as applicable to allow the change, extension, alteration, enlargement of a lawful pre-existing non-conforming structure for relief of the right setback from 9.6 feet to 9.1 feet and the left setback from 11 feet to 9.9 feet. And it's associated with the addition and alterations you're constructing or about to construct in a single-family home again at 20 Alderbrook Road, which is located in the Single Residence B zoning district. Could you please introduce yourself for the record besides my introduction already?
I'm Anita.
I'm Varda, I'm a project designer. Benny, I'm a project architect who present the project on Zona.
And Amit Schwartz.
Can I have your full name and your company and where you located it?
Varda Kerner-Leez, Company in Nekuda, 2001 Beacon Street, Boston.
In Boston.
Cleveland, CA.
And Ben?
Benny Bear is from Nekuda, he is the architect and owner of the Zona.
Okay, now you were before us two months ago?
Exactly.
Okay, so we're here to listen to your application. What's different, what's changed, what do you need to change?
Three months ago.
I think it's March.
Okay.
No, so four months.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We missed you, so we wanted to come back.
If we meet Thursday night, you want to be here.
For the record.
Okay, Benny can join us?
Okay, can you hear me?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good evening and thank you for inviting us and thank you for the flexibility of allowing me to join this meeting remotely from halfway around the world. And this project is... We've been before the ZBA, before. We asked for significant relief, we failed to obtain that. And we have made changes to the project, we'd like to present them here. And with your permission, I'll share my screen and I will go through a quick presentation of the project.
So just for the record, you submitted an application and was withdrawn without prejudice?
I believe that...
It was for a variance?
They had a variance that was denied and then the piece that was a special permit that was withdrawn with that or without prejudice.
Okay, just want to make sure you have the legal ability to be here. But go ahead Benny.
So the project is located at 20 Alderbrook Lane in Needham. It's a single-family residence. Here is a photograph of the existing conditions from Alderbrook Lane. As it appears, you can see on the very left, if you can see my cursor, there's a front entry door to the house. There's a secondary entry here with steps to enter in adjacent to the kitchen. Currently, cars are parked on the surface to the right here. Here's another view further over to the right, you can see the corner of the house. There are some historic site plans and survey plans that we had prepared for the previous project. I'll just run quickly through them. The main point here is the shape of the lot and the location of the house relative to lot lines have changed over the history of this structure. This, in the middle of the screen, is an existing condition site plan. We also have some other conditions that affect this project. We are... We have proximity to riverfront. We have bothering vegetated wetlands. We have a water and sewer easement right in the left side yard. And we already have an order of conditions from the Needham Conservation Commission. We will have to make some amendments to it because the design has changed. Here, you can see the proposed site plan. We propose to construct a one-car garage addition in the... to the right of the house. There is an existing non-conforming side yard on both sides of the house as Daphne just presented. We are proposing to make some changes to this nonconformity, make it slightly worse on both the right and the left. I'll describe it in a few minutes. We are currently conforming and we're not proposing to change this conforming condition to the front yard. The... there are three lines here that constitute front yards. There's one right along Alderbrook Lane and then it turns here and turns to this. And this line here is the side lot line. In the middle, you can see that the existing sighting of the house on the lot, you can see the... in red, the footprint of the house. To the right, you can see the proposed addition. So there is a small car, a single-car garage here. We're proposing to make a slight enlargement here that is necessitated by building code requirements of stairs to the room that's going to be constructed above the garage. We are proposing to enlarge the existing deck to the rear. We're not going to make that non-conforming side yard condition worse. We're going to just pick that corner and run parallel to the lot line here. And the second floor is going to extend to the right of the house. This is a front yard because of the difference between required front yard setbacks for parking and for non-parking uses. So we're going to take advantage of what's available there. The parking is going to respect the 25-foot setback. The bedroom suite that's going to be constructed over it is going to respect the required 20-foot setback. This is the existing conditions at the top. It's with trees on the bottom is with the trees turned off, just for clarity. And here are the proposed conditions. Again, trees on the top, no trees on the bottom. So you can see how the second floor is going to extend beyond and have some supports at the end here, but the single-car garage is going to remain in conformance to the front yard. This is another view from the side. Existing on the left, with trees, without trees. Proposed on the right, with trees, without trees. We're conforming to height requirements. Now, what you can see right here, we're proposing to construct a canopy over the main front door. This canopy conforms to front yard requirements. And since we already have a pre-existing non-conforming side yard on that side, we are going to have one support in that side yard. It's going to make that non-conforming condition slightly worse. There are some additional views here. This diagram shows the proposed site plan with the areas highlighted in yellow being the existing non-conforming side yards. There's a non-conforming here on the right that is the main structure. There's a non-conforming area here that is the rear deck. The orange areas, this one here, this small one here, and this one here on the deck. These are the proposed non-conforming side yards.
Mr. Bear, have you seen the building inspector's comments on this?
Yes, I have.
So I'm trying to line up what you're saying the increases in non-conformities are and what the building inspector is suggesting. Can you just take a look at that? And I'm reading this, I've read it three times and I'm a little confused because they don't seem to be the same as what you're presenting, but maybe they are.
I'll stop the show for a minute and I'll open the documents they have.
Sure, it's dated July 9.
So here are the building commissioners' comments. Let me point out for the record that after filing these documents, the building commissioner contacted me, requested a meeting, which I scheduled the following day. And we went over it and my sense, and from reading this, these comments, is that he understands very well what we're trying to do. He... I'll read it. This application proposes two-story addition on the right.
No, we have it in front of us and on the screen. So you don't have to read it.
Okay, so what exactly do you find?
I'm looking for the record of the expansion of the non-conformities on the left side and the right side, if that's what you're doing. Because that's the crux of this application.
John, can I ask a question? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
So I share with John the concern. We're just... we're trying to understand specifically. By the way, this looks like a nice, appropriate design. We're just trying to understand the... at least I am, the what it's being expanded. You have a non-conformity and you're making it more non-conforming, but in a way that seems to be nicely screened. But so, the gentleman, so is on one side it goes from 6.5 or 9.5 to 6.4 and then the other side 9.9 to... of 11.5 to 9.9? Is that the quantity of... it's moving over two or three feet? Expanding it by two or three... It's difficult to read these small plans. And if you want to actually walk us over to your plan, the proposed, and highlight the setbacks, you can do it on the screen. So yeah, and maybe you can enlarge it, that's all.
It will be easier.
I can probably see the tiny, it's all.
But yeah, right, but you can... Just bring it up so we can focus in on the area that's proposed and what the setbacks are.
I think this one is helpful to go back.
Yeah, actually, I'll take that, sure.
Thank you.
The yellow and the orange? The yellow and the orange.
The A4 is a little bit small.
Yeah, I'm looking for testimony of exactly what it is. I'm not going to try to read that. So blow it up and let's take a look at it. Because you're increasing a non-conformity, that's an issue.
Well, are you looking at something else other than what I'm showing on the screen here?
Can you blow that up a little more? And just hone in on the two-side setbacks, perfect. There you go, excellent.
Okay, so right here, there is a non-conforming condition of the main structure. This was something that I asked the building commissioner at our meeting whether the zoning bylaw treats the main structure the same as the deck. He did not give me a clear-cut answer at the time. But if the answer is yes, it's the same whether it's a deck or the structure, then the worst condition here is right here. I'll try to see whether I have another plan that actually calls out that dimension.
Try AS 101, if you can enlarge it on the plan, I can show it here.
Okay, I can...
AS 101.
Okay, AS 101 is an architectural site plan, but it does...
On the right side, it shows the dimensions.
AS 101.
AS 101.
It might be in the section that is it revised one that you guys sent?
They still can't read it, so whether you have it as AS 101 or whatever my eyes...
He shows it here.
That's pretty good, I can't read it.
Okay, if you can see my screen, there are dimensions here that are calling out a proposed setback. It's... here it says 8 foot 11 inches. Right here, it has a proposed setback for the deck at 6 foot 4 and 1/4 inch. It's the same as the existing. So if the deck setback is treated the same as the main structure setback, then there's no increase in non-conformity on this side.
So focus in on the two sides where there must be some enlargement of the encroachment, you're getting closer to the sidelines. So highlight if you may, those two areas, sir.
Okay, here, if you see my screen now, this is the existing condition. So the existing setback here is 9 foot 5 inches. And like I showed here, we're proposing to increase it to 8 foot 11. But the existing setback for the deck right here is 6 foot 4 inches and some change, some fraction. And we're not proposing to make that. So if this is treated as the worst non-conformity on this side, then there's no increase in non-conformity on the right side in respect to the side yard, side lot line setback, side yard.
And it is, and if it isn't, it's being increased to 8.11, that's what you said, correct?
Well, the deck will remain at 6 foot 4, so...
But the other structure you mentioned a moment ago goes from 9.5 to 8.11, that's pretty minimal, about a half a foot.
Yes, that's correct.
But that's the increase? And the building inspector has not rendered an opinion on the deck versus the main structure?
He did not. From work that we've done in other jurisdictions, we know that some of them treat decks and structures somewhat differently since we could not find any language in the Needham zoning bylaw to indicate that. We take that to mean that the deck is treated the same as a structure.
So I think it's something we will want the building inspector to weigh in on that issue. So how about the other side of the house?
Well, John, can I disinquire on this?
Yeah.
So does it make a difference? In other words, it sounds like the worst case is they treat the deck as a structure. And either way, it's extending about a half a foot.
Doesn't matter whether it's a half a foot, or 1/4, or 3/4, it's an extension, yeah, that's the issue. But if there's no extension, there's no extension.
No, no, but the reason, I believe, for the special permit is that we can discuss it, right, and whether it's detrimental or not?
Yep. Let's go to the other side of the house and explain that.
The other side of the house, all we're proposing here, we're not proposing any addition to the main house. The only thing that we're proposing to add is a support for a canopy right in this corner. The canopy is larger than the 25 square foot that the zoning bylaw allows to encroach into a side yard or a front yard, I believe. We're not encroaching into... we're not projecting into the front yard, but we're proposing to have a canopy with a support that extends here. So this is the... The condition that he's talking about in his... The enclosed entry canopy extends along... Well, this is... this is not correct here. Let me see if I can find the existing site plan from the... So the existing setback here is 11 feet, 11.0, and we're proposing to reduce it to 9 foot 9.
One more time, 9.9?
9.9.
9.9 feet.
A foot and a half.
It's a little more than a foot, it's a foot point one.
It's... I'm saying, that's on the left side?
This is on the left side.
Just a kind of... And the previous one was on the right side, on the side, got it, thank you.
This one was on the right side. The right side is right here and you can see, and this is the survey engineer's existing conditions plan, that the existing setback here is... Existing and the proposed is 6 foot 4. So we take that to be the worst case and we're not making it any worse than it already is.
Assuming the building inspector agrees with you. So here's where I'm coming from. I would like to hear from the building inspector of his position, what we're granting a special permit on. So I don't want to guess and I need to look at structure versus deck. Number two, I would like a plan sort of culled from that, just showing the two encroachments, the two non-conformities that you're expanding on or not expanding upon to that. So just really clear, so if we vote to issue a special permit, we know and can refer to exactly. There's a lot of plans. The building inspector's comments are somewhat contrary to what Benny just sort of said on something. So I think you have to have that conversation again with him. And it can be very simple. I believe there's no difference between the deck and the structure. I don't see an increase in the non-conformity. And on the other side, it is what it is. And then give us a plan so we're not going through... It looks like a wonderful project. It looked like a good project before, when you were coming in before. It's very beautiful, we would like to try to assist you in getting this done. But something's missing in the communication here in the presentation.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
You know, I think that what you're doing is overall appropriate. You're expanding, as I understand it, but I agree with John, it isn't clear in the plan, so we're looking for clarification, is that on the right side, you're going from 9.5 to 8.11. And on the left side, it's 11.1 to 9.9. And I understand there's an existing 4-foot tightness, so it's really arguably not increasing. But in any event, you're moving on the 146 under alteration and, you know, so you're here for a special permit. And so that it seems to be our charge is to... And this, as I understand it, 146 is allowing an enlargement, but in a way that's not detrimental to the neighborhood. And you're not creating new non-conformities in the front that didn't exist. So but so I, you know, I certainly concur with John in that the... we're getting sort of conflicting measurements, it was all unclear. So just some clarity from the building inspector, perhaps even in writing. And also, just as John points out, to highlight on the plan, those affected areas. But, you know, in terms of whether it's a deck or not, even if the deck is considered a structure, you know, you're... In my mind personally, it's a de minimis, there's no... Maybe we're not there with it.
Well, we have a new building inspector who has different positions and things and I'd like some clarity.
Agreed, agreed.
Exactly what it is, and then this could be very simple. So anyway, I didn't mean to cut you off if you wanted to continue your presentation. It just... it's very attractive and it came down to two issues, the right side and the left side. And that was where it was confusing to me when I read the application, when I read the memo, when I tried to read the plans, and then when I saw the building inspector's thing. Any thoughts?
Well, I think we can do that, I think we can clarify with the building inspector. Like I said, the building inspector was very forthcoming, he was very... He wanted to meet with us, he wanted to understand it. I apologize, I have been away for the past week or so and I did not read his memo until not too long ago. So I did not pick up on this discrepancy about this dimension on the left side. I'll have this conversation with him on my return early next week. And like it from there. You did not cut me off, I think we got to the crux of the matter here. We're talking about the things that we're asking relief on and I think you deserve to have clarity on it as you make this decision.
Mr. Chairman, again, make one suggestion that we perhaps note if there's any here...
We have a bunch of things to do before we do that.
Okay, good, all right, got it.
So I just wanted to ask you, did you have any thoughts, comments, questions? Because they're going to go back.
To clarify the discrepancies between the commissioner's comments and what's being presented, I think that makes sense.
Okay, if you could read the plans and understand them and there's no confusion in your mind, everybody sees things differently. I just want to read in the record. So for the record, the building inspector presented his memorandum of July 9 with these comments made. And his takeaway was the proposal requires a special permit under 1.4.6, which is what we have. The Board of Health had really no comment. Fire Department had no comment. The police had no comment. Clay Hutchinson from the Conservation Commission's indicated that new layout may require you to come back to revise your calculations, but the changes do not appear to be substantial enough to warrant a new commentary on the project or suitability under the Wetlands Protections Regulations. So I think you may just have to go back to the conservation, as you said. And lastly, the Public Works Department indicated they have no comment or objection. They gave you the litany of things that they reviewed. So I think you're good stead with the various departments. Is anyone in the room tonight having any comments? George, you have any comments? Anyone in the... Anyone in the Zoom world have any comments, questions? Or against?
We have no hands raised. So we have no hands raised on this.
All right, seeing no hands raised, I won't close the public hearing, but I will continue it with your recommendations to the August hearing, which is, what date is that? August 15th at 7:30. Sound good? We'll try to put a lot of hearings on at 7:30 so we don't have a half an hour wait ever again. But anyway, so we'll continue this motion to continue till August 15th at 7:30?
You entertain a motion.
I've asked you.
Yes, so moved.
All right, is it second?
Second.
All of ever yet. So we will continue until August 15th at 7:30.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Safe trip.
Thank you.
I think that's all the way around. Halfway's California. See ya.
It's five days past the way. So he went there. He just, it's eight days ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. A little clarity in that, I think we're okay. Next up is at 7:45 PM, the application of Needham Enterprises LLC. He's applied for variance under 3.21 and other sections of the bylaw to seek a plant substitution or further relief pursuant to variance issued on January 18th, 1951, back when the town issued variances, I guess, for a two-family use and any other relief necessary and appropriate to permit the demolition of an existing two-family dwelling and replacement of a new two-family structure. The property is located in the single residence B district again at 277 Brookline Ave. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is George Juntz Jr. I'm an attorney.
Can I interrupt you for a second? There's a signing sheet outside.
Please, I'll do it.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Juntz.
George Juntz Jr., attorney for the applicant this evening with respect to this application for 277 Brookline Street. As indicated, this is a request for new variance, but to basically substitute plans much like the board has done in three other cases, and sort of a fourth as well.
Would you sign those for the record?
I will be.
All right.
That's part of my presentation. All right, so the property is shown as parcel four on sheet 55 of the assessor's map. It consists of 13,560 square feet of area with 146.04 feet of frontage on Brookline Street. So the lot complies with the frontage and area requirements of the bylaw. The property is currently occupied by a two and a half story, two-family residential dwelling. The dwelling appears to have been built in 1915 and then was expanded in 1951 and then again slightly expanded in 1959. It consists, the existing structure consists of 2,460 square feet of interior finished space on the first and second floors. And by a use variance dated January 18th, 1951, permission was granted to convert and use what was then the existing house as a two, for two-family purposes. After issuance of that variance shortly after, in March of 1951, a building permit number 8828 was issued to expand the house and to formally convert it to two-family use. Then in March of 1959, a subsequent permit number 3059 was issued to enclose porches both up and down, which is the slightly further expansion that I mentioned. Then just as a side note, there were a couple of permits issued in the 1980s for two heating boilers and two domestic hot water, basically confirming the two-family use of the property. The proposal is to demolish the existing two-family structure and replace it with a new two and a half story, two-family structure. The proposed replacement structure complies not only with sort of the general dimensional and density requirements, but also with the dimensional density requirements of section 1.4.7.4. Now, that section technically applies to lawful pre-existing nonconforming structures and therefore does not strictly speaking apply here. However, we have followed the limitations of that section, and we comply with all of those, even though it doesn't strictly speaking apply in this instance. Again, consistent with the cases that I'm going to mention in a few minutes. So the front setback is 21.1 feet versus 20 feet required. Side setbacks are 14.3 and 28.4 versus 12 required. Rear is 44.4 versus 20 required. Lot coverage, there are two ways that lot coverage is measured with respect to nonconformities, nonconforming two families. The first is under section 1.4.7.4. That's the more restrictive, which allows a maximum lot coverage of 18%. We're at 17.4%, so we're under the maximum 18. The other one is at 4.3.1, I think, of the bylaw, which applies generally to new construction in the single residence B district. And that's a limitation of 25% lot coverage. With respect to that aspect, we are at 20.5%. So we are definitely under, under that one. And I just note, it may sound interesting if you get two lot coverage requirements with different percentages. That's because the two sections of the bylaw provide different ways to calculate lot coverage. So one section takes into account more parts of the building than the other one does. So you have these two different percentages.
Such as the basement?
No, such as in one section, you actually measure from the eve overhang straight down to the ground. And then the other one, you don't. You measure basically from the face of the foundation, the face of the building.
Is the basement space excluded?
So it is, well, this is lot coverage. This is footprint only that we're talking about here. So I think what you're talking about would be floor area.
Yes.
And in, with respect to floor area, there is no separate requirement in section 1.4.7.4. But there is a general requirement in section four of the bylaw, and that maximum is 0.36, which, given the size of this lot, would be a floor area of 4,881 square feet. We're actually at 4,472 square feet. So we are almost 410 square feet under the maximum floor ratio. And that, as it stands right now, the floor ratio does not take into account attic space or basement space. As I'm sure you're aware, there was a, there's an effort afoot to revise it so that it does count basement and attic. But right now, that's still in, still under study with the planning board. So we, so we comply with all the dimensional density requirements, both as, as applied to nonconforming two families and as applied to single families in the SRB zoning district. Notably, because we are complying with the nonconforming two-family requirements of section 1.4.7.4, this proposed reconstruction is substantially smaller than the maximum single-family house that you could have on the lot. Because this is an oversight lot at 13,000 change square feet, you could have a much, a really monstrous single-family house in the lot.
That's usually the truth. It's a good argument.
Right, but we're, we're less than that. We're substantially less than that because of the constraints of 1474. So, so as far as that goes, we think that, you know, we comply with the dimensional and density requirements. Now, circling back to the previous cases. So this board has on three prior occasions looked at situations where a use variance was granted. And in particular, these are all three cases where the use variance was granted to convert a single-family house to a two-family house. But the language in all of them wound up the same, where there were no restrictions, conditions, or anything tied to a specific set of plans or with respect to use of a specific house. I contrast that. There are a couple of decisions out there from the board from prior years, back in the 50s and so on, that did specifically tie to a specific house or a specific set of plans. So, and those three cases are 460 Central Avenue, which is relatively recent, that was only a couple of years ago. 114 Hillside Avenue, that's a couple of years back from that. And then 7072 Marshall Street, which goes back, I think, maybe almost probably 15, 20 years. I think I provided copies of those decisions with the application so that you would have them. But basically, all of those decisions turn on the question of, is the proposed replacement two-family, is it consistent with the variance that was granted? And is it an overburdening of the variance that was granted? That's the top things. And is it substantially more detrimental than the existing two-family? So when you apply those questions to this instance, our argument is that it does not overburden the variance. It's consistent with the, with the variance that was granted. And it is not substantially more inconsistent because it comply, it not only complies with all the dimensional density, but we're actually under the various requirements. So this isn't where we're maxed out to the nth degree, and we're right there at the, at the limits. We're actually a little bit under. It will also replace an older two-family that needs work with a, with a new two-family. In addition, there is also a proposed detached two-car garage. And then there's parking along with that to add surface parking onsite for cars for the two-family use. So and as a side note, there was also another prior case, Highland Animal Hospital, where the board also considered something similar, although that was in a commercial case, obviously. And that one did include a minor amendment of the actual variance. So while it overlaps a bit, it's also a bit different. So I just mentioned that as a side note. But the three cases, the 460 Central, 114 Hillside, and 7072 Marshall are all exactly the same type of application as before you this evening. So for all those reasons, we would suggest that the, that the proposed replacement house falls within, within the relief that had been granted back in 1951, and that therefore this is something the board can approve. Along with that, if you've looked at the plans that were submitted that show the architectural designs of the house, when you look at the proposal, the proposed replacement house from the street, it looks very much like a single-family house, and that there is really only one main door. So it's been designed in a way that, that gets in more with the single-family neighborhood than some other two-family designs that have been constructed. So for all those reasons, I'd ask that you approve the application and grant the release.
George, can you show us where in the plan, my plan is that the, the look that looks like a single family, is there a particular plan member?
It's towards the, it's sort of about, I think, two-thirds of the way through.
A6?
Yes, A6. That top elevation on A6, you can see that's the front elevation. That's what it looks at, looks like from the front. You can see you've got a single entry door in the front. It looks just like a single. You wouldn't know that that was from the front. You would not know it was a two-family.
Thank you.
Been around a long time, huh? I'm looking at the one on Martry.
Martry.
Where was it? L. Barnwood? The Delaney in 2000.
Oh, Marshall, on Marshall, yes. Yes, that was on.
You've had those up in cases?
Yeah, I think, and I think I gave you copies of the decisions.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, he comes back every decade with a new one.
Well, there are, there was a period in Needham when you could go and ask for a variance. In fact, there was a period you could also ask for a special permit to convert a single family to a two-family. Obviously, that is not the case anymore, but there are a bunch of these out there. And obviously, at this point, you know, a lot of these were done in the 50s and early 60s. So they're right, you know, a lot of them are of a condition where they're ripe for rebuilding. And they're also a little bit smaller, and they don't quite match the, sort of the marketplace today of what people want for, for units in Needham.
So 21 was the last one we did in this sort of?
That was 460 Central.
George, what's, I'm sorry, what's the square footage of each of those two units?
So you did get a letter that had a calculation from the architect, and the unit breakdown is
What plan is it? Are you looking at something?
This is not on the plan. It's a separate, it's a letter that you got. It's dated June, June 21st, 2024. And unit A is, the total is, well, this is first and second floor. It doesn't include the attic in the basement. Is 2,168 square feet, and then unit B is 2,304 square feet. Then the attic is roughly an additional 600 square feet. It's 574 on one and 650 on the other.
Is that livable space, the attic?
The attic, yes. It's occupiable space.
So the 21, so that's in addition. So what's the total, George?
So you asked me to do math on the rounds.
Well, I'm sorry, ballpark sounds like it's approximately 2,500 in A.
Almost 3,000. 23 plus 6, that's 20, that's almost.
Roughly 2,600.
An A and how much to B?
Per unit.
26, pretty good. Okay, thank you.
Also, the attic is split in half. You said 650 feet.
Well, there's an attic space for each unit. So it's, it's 574 for one unit, and it's 650 for the other unit. And again, this is set forth in the letter from the architect dated June 21st.
Do you by any chance have any renderings that can go on the screen or for the people on Zoom, or is it just simply what we have here is?
So I can try and do a share screen, or I know Daphne had the electronic versions.
Well, I'll, I'll ask the question because we have some people who have come in, in the public, and I want to know if they can understand, have seen the project and understand what you're proposing, or what it looks like. Because a lot of this is, what does it look like?
I can, I can certainly pass these around, share these, the plans.
Has everybody seen the plans for this project? Okay, okay, okay. So you don't have to see it on screen. I get it. So do you have more to present?
No, that's, that's
Okay, I just want to read into the record, so I don't miss, and there's an interesting component of these comments that we should address. So Public Works had no comment. The police had no comment. The fire department had no comment. And Board of Health indicate your typical pest control during construction and so on. Now, the building inspector, which you've probably seen, I'm sure, indicated that he doesn't believe a variance or any zoning relief is required. And his analysis, and I'll just read it for the record, the property was granted a use variance in 1951, allowing the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling in the single-residence zoning district, where at that time, two-family dwellings were not normally allowed. The current zoning district is now SRV. The use variance effectively varied the terms of the zoning bylaw, thereby allowing a two-family use in the single-residence zoning district specific only to this property. Variances are considered to run with the land and the property. The variance contain no conditions with further limited disposition of the structure, which you referred to. The proposal shows that the new structure will comply dimensionally with all the terms of the current bylaw. I do believe the board can take no action on this application. The applicant can proceed to the normal building process. However, I will consider any opinions of the board members that differ from this opinion. That's from the building inspector. It's a very interesting one. So the question is, why didn't you just apply for a building permit?
Well, so I raised those exact arguments with two prior building inspectors and was flat out told that because it is a new building fitting under an existing zoning relief, that a determination had to be made by the Board of Appeals. While I love the current building inspector's opinion, I, I tend to look, at this point, we have now established with these three prior cases, essentially a form of precedent, to say that, that this is how it is handled. I also would note that while the variance for the use runs with the land, I absolutely agree with that. And that's part of the argument is, you know, the use can't be stripped away. So no matter what, this property can be used for two-family. There is an aspect of our bylaw that treats two-families and single-family zones as requiring some review. What that level of review is, I think we could quibble about. We could go back and forth on. But it does arguably under the bylaw require some review. We have an entire section. And that entire section is predicated on nonconforming two-families. This is not a nonconforming two-family, because our bylaw specifically excludes from the definition of nonconforming two-families or any pre-existing use that was authorized by a special permit or other zoning relief. So technically, even though we are following, and this goes to my point earlier, even though we are following the dimensional requirements of section 1.4.7.4, technically, under the strict letter of the bylaw, those don't actually apply. So under the strict letter of the bylaw, it's not clear what would, what the
Right, and just to be clear, maybe people in the audience, is that this use is a permitted use because a variance was issued in 51. So therefore, it doesn't get the exception under that provision you mentioned for the nonconformity, because it does conform. So it's, it's a, but my, I want to jump in, but I, I do feel that it is appropriate to get a public hearing. It looks like there's some folks that have some comments. And I respectfully disagree with the building commissioner and do appreciate you indicating that two previous commissioners thought it was appropriate. I think a public hearing, a special permit is, is appropriate.
So given that, we have the commentary. I think the board is convened a public hearing, and we're going to continue. hearing, and we're going to continue with the public hearing and make a determination of whether it complies with the context of the variance, or whether you can modify it, expand it, so on. I think our prior cases indicated that you can, and the question is there any conditions? And that was sort of the finding we have to make. So we have several findings. So, given that, I'm going to ask anybody in the public who would like to come in, come up, there's a microphone, to speak for, against, or you just have some other commentary about today, you want to address, we're here to hear anything. We are being cablecast on the Needham Channel, so you're now being recorded.
Yes. So I wanted to go first because of that. My name is Elena, and I'm the Elena Choi, and I'm the only, only closest butter to the, field, facing 277, we're on the left, Eric and myself.
And your address, please?
283 Brookline Street. So I, I have tried to do as much information gathering in the last few days. We've had these plans for maybe two, two weeks approximately, so I'm trying very hard to catch up as a late person, which I think the audience would probably understand. So I have a couple of comments, I'll try to be pointed and, and quick about it. One is that when I was trying to find out about the two-family variance, where do I find out about that? And I know there's the mass state law, and there seems to be, a lot of towns have a lot of say and interpretation on how to apply that within their boundaries. And so with regard to this two-family, how long does that last? Does it go with the land until perpetuity, or is it with the structure itself? All these questions, I don't think have a clear resolution. But I can say for, for this particular building, we've been there since 2005. And I know that we were friendly with the owner, who just passed away and passed on the, the property. This building in 51, I think, was constructed, it was already there, it was a family home. The, one of the children, the daughter, got married, the son-in-law moved in, they asked to put a kitchen downstairs, I think, and a bathroom upstairs, plus the back porch. And they all, you know, they divided themselves, but they still lived, it was one large extended family. And then the grandparents, the existing, were living on the lower level, the two parents were, I mean, the parents were on the lower level, one passed away in the 70, the mom passed away in the 90s. At that point, I think in the 90s and into the early 2000s, I talked with the son-in-law, and this is how I got this history, they did rent out that first-floor unit, maybe two or three times. By the time we got there in 2005, we only saw one renter, and she was by herself. And after that, shortly after that, before Pauline, Lee's wife, passed away, Lee had, was sort of, you know, they were solo in there. And eventually, after Pauline passed away in about 2009, 2010, Lee was there by himself. His daughter would come and live on the first floor, and take care of him, and be around for other reasons, and that has been the case for 15 years.
Can I interrupt you? Because I think I know where you're coming from.
Okay.
And there's a difference between a non-conforming structure, where a two-family could be lost if you abandoned the use.
Okay.
And it becomes a single-family.
Okay.
This is a variance.
Okay.
It's for the, forever.
Okay.
It's a two-family, the town in 1951 declared this as a two-family, basically.
Okay.
So that, could be one person living there, two people, that's not going to change that.
Okay, and it goes with the property, not the structure?
The land.
The land.
Runs with the land.
Runs with the land, okay. That was not clear to me, so thank you, because I would have been searching.
Now, there could be variances that were issued that particularly apply to that, just that structure. And what Mr. Junta cited with three cases that we heard, and there's others, where that was our, our finding as well. If it is no, not conditioned, like when you can't replace this, you can't do anything, you can't expand it, that's not what this was granted. This was granted a full variance on this.
But I guess I'm, I'm, I hear what you're saying, if that's the law, that's the law, but you, the intent here was an expanded, you know, extended family dwelling, and that's what it's been used for?
I, I understand.
Okay, I'll leave that point then. And then with regard to the, the design here, the front of the building, yes, it's, it looks like a single-family. I, I'm not sure why that, that would be the best design, because you can have a fuller front yard, and it still would be sort of in line with the rest of the neighborhood. I did print out a couple of photos of, if you will...
Be happy to take a look at them.
I'm sorry, yeah. So this is, this is our house on the left, and this is the 277 on the right. There's not a lot of distance, and the only part of the, the, the new design that is actually...
Would you mind holding that up so we can see it better?
Yeah, so that actually moves closer, is, is, is at our side. The other side of the house is a rather large lot. I mean, granted, it's a funny-shaped lot, so it doesn't, you know, it's not rectangular all the way back. So this is the, the 277 existing, there's a lot of frontage here. And then it does go in, but the visual space, because this is forest land, I mean, town forest, there's a lot of visual space there. So we're the only butters on, and this is the building on the other side of this. So we're right here, they're right there. There's a really nice old tree there, and with this moving, I think about four feet closer, they're going from 18 to 14 feet, and it's under the 12 feet, but still, it's, it's coming closer, and it's already at a slope that is a bit higher than where we are here. And, you know, between the size of the building, that will go from here and all the way back, even though the front is going to look like a single-family, this is going to be a large structure right up against our yard.
Would screening help, our providers, for example?
Yes, they would help. But I don't understand why it has to be that close. When you have, when you have, you know, there's 20 feet between the, the existing building and the garage, I'm not sure why that has to be...
So you've asked the chair the question? I'd like to ask the applicant's counsel the question. Has it been looked at?
I don't believe it has specifically. And just looking at the layout on the plan, my, my read would be that, basically, the way it's set up is to provide a little bit of yard space, sort of, if you, if you look at...
Can I have those two photos? Would you like to submit those for the record?
No, sure, I didn't have any intel for them.
The more we have, the better.
Okay.
Oh, when, when your turn, okay. Do you have anything else to comment about as we're talking about this one thing?
Yes, one la, one...
Yes.
One, there's also, it looks like four parking spaces in front of the, the garage that's proposed. That, you know, it's, it doesn't really kind of keep in character with our streetscape at the neighborhood. It reminds me of some of the new duplexes on Webster, which has that parking right off of the sidewalk. And I need to say that this is be, not, not for our sake as an a-butter, but this street is close to the Mitchell School, it's a schoolwalking zone, right here, you know, in front of our property and in front of this property.
So what's the problem with, with?
The four, four parking spaces right off of the sidewalk.
It's the aesthetics, the way it looks.
The aesthetics, and also having side-by-side, that, you know, it's, it's for side-by-side cars, thanks.
Yep.
It's two-family-ish. Okay, got it.
George, is there an opportunity to look at that? You have the butter here who's not so happy that it's so close to her house when she perceives there's room on the other side?
Certainly can look at that, and I'd ask whoever's running the Zoom, I believe Matt Orelli, who's the, the sort of real party and interest behind the...
Behind the LLC?
Yes, he should be on the Zoom and maybe bring him over, so he can comment on that. But yes, it does, it does look like there is some room to, to maybe move it or do some things. So one of the issues, I will say, is with respect to the, the garage, you know, if you look at the, the shape of the property, you've got a angle on this side, which does become a limiting factor with respect to how much you can sort of slide things and move things on that side. But it does look, I mean, there is 20 feet between the garage and the house, the bylaw requires a minimum of 10 feet, so, so there would be a little bit of, there should be some room there, but then we also have to watch the, the setback on this back corner back here as well.
Yep, but you don't know until you hear your butters and your neighbors say this, you know, if, if, if the variance give you the permission to do the two-family, might as well make it nice for, for everybody.
Exactly.
All right.
This is why we disagree with the building commissioner.
I don't know, that's your position, I don't know if I disagree with him, but go ahead.
And still on facing our side of the, of the property, there are two sliding doors, one for each unit, and they go down, it looks like two decks right there, facing us again. So continuing on this very close, and they're sort of recreation space fronting us, when there is, I wouldn't imagine, I mean, I think there's so much better view to the trees, to the forest on this side. I'm not sure why that design is the way it is. And one, I think only one last area that I want to comment on, and I didn't see, I mean, it, it looks like it's not that close to any wetlands or any reason for environmental comment, but I am concerned for this area, because we know this is, back here is a, a brook stream that goes under, my other neighbors can speak to that. So we're worried about the slope and the drainage from this, in addition to, to everything else.
Every piece of new construction is responsible of the builder to manage that. If they have wetlands issues, they have to go through the Conservation Commission, whose jurisdiction is to protect the wetlands. So you, you monitor it, the builder's responsible, the builder builds a Needham, and presumably will take care of any of that, so there is, you're not impacted that way. But it's something you have to monitor. So anybody else who would like to come on up, sir? Identify yourself for the record, into the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Eric Gravlin, I also live at 283 Brookline Street, Elena's my wife, and I had just a couple of additional points that I wanted to add. In terms of the ability to move the property more away from us, the foundation, the, Mr. Günther, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, said that there's a, you know, there's restrictions in terms of the property line on that side, and the reason that it's this way was to give them a better yard. But the way the property is located, or the way the property looks now when you go there, even though it's not part of the official property lot, there's a big triangle in the far right corner that's been maintained by the existing owner as yard space, and so presumably that would just continue over there, and so there is already...
Not really.
No?
You can't take the town's property.
Well, he's using it, and he has, and he has been probably for 50 years.
I understand, that doesn't help the new...
No, my point was is that there is open space there.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
But it's not on his property.
Yep.
That's the problem.
And the other point that I wanted to make is with a, such a, with a much larger property there, we do have concerns about drainage and about runoff, because there's less land to absorb the water, and then that big tree that's there presumably is going to be cut down, because it looks like it's sort of in the middle of the plans, and so that's not going to be absorbing the water. We're concerned that water is going to be coming our way, and is, you know, is there anything that the board can do to...
The Department of Public Works monitors, they have to present an entire plan to monitor that and manage that, and you have an ability to talk to the Department of Public Works and Mr. Günther and the developer, and one of the things I'm sort of suggesting is that the neighbors and the developer, builder, sort of have a dialogue and talk about this before you come back, if you have to come back another time. So yes, there is a mechanism, and because of all the flooding, the town is very aware of that, and I think they do a pretty good job of imposing restrictions on builders on new construction.
Okay.
So I think those types of things. I don't, I can't tell you about the land that the town owns, or the tree yet.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm just saying when you look at it, there's a lot more yard space than shows up on the plot plan.
I understand.
So the other thing is, on, to that point as well, on social media, you see a lot of people complaining about additional flooding that they never had before after new construction next to them, which is why it's really a concern for us as well. And the, the last point that I wanted to make was, there's a lot of mature plantings along the property line, like right on the line, and presumably whatever ones are on the, not on our side are going to be removed, but we would like care taken to make sure that none of the plantings on our side are...
I think that's important, and I think your wife asked, I think Howard indicated about plantings and buffer between your house and the, this project.
Yeah.
That's something, again, to discuss perhaps with the builder and Mr. Günther, and come up with something that works for both people, and, and preserving as much as you can to preserve, and I think they usually do.
Yeah. And one last question, is there any, I know it's probably not in the plans, but is there any plan to have a fence between the two properties?
That's sort of the screening that Howard talked about.
Would you like one, sir?
I'm not certain. I mean, it sort of depends on where we end up with these other conversations, but I mean, natural screening is generally better for us, but the mature plantings I'm talking about are sort of at the end of both structures right now, our house and the house across the way, they kind of start there and go back, but not really between the two houses, it's just the big tree that's there.
Got it.
So, and that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? John, sir?
How are you?
Great. Oh, my name is Dan Valley, can you hear me?
Yes.
I live at 304 Brookline Street, just, just down the way. I appreciate you giving us an opportunity to come here and receive a letter notifying us about this, because when someone builds in a neighborhood, there's, really, there's no place to go to ask about the projects unless, you know, you don't even know, and next thing you know, the excavator shows up, well, you start cutting trees.
On a single-family house, that's always the case, yes.
Yeah, so I, I would like to see some change in that, but this isn't the forum for that. But I, I am a registered civil engineer, I'm a licensed, and I review building plans, I work for the city of Cambridge, I, I review building plans all the time. And I was just looking at this one, I don't know if it's incomplete, or if there's more information, but I am concerned for my neighbor, where we're increasing the footprint of the building and increasing impervious area on the property. They have a plan here where they say, where they say they're going to store one inch of rain, but that really means nothing. Typically, you would assess the runoff from the property and the existing conditions, and then assess the runoff after the construction, and then you would store the additional water that you create onsite. So he just says a one-inch storm, which means nothing, I mean, it's helpful. Also, the downhill side going towards our neighbors, the Gravlins, there's nothing showing that they're going to collect that water and put it in the infiltration system, so I would advocate for that, that they collect the water on the, on, I guess it's the, the west side.
Could I interrupt for a second? George, can you just address what the, what you, you're going to have to do with the town now?
Right, so, so the, the town in Needham has adopted a stormwater bylaw, and basically the, the requirement of the bylaw is essentially that you have to collect the one-inch runoff. So all the, all the roof drains, so the entirety of the, the house get, basically get piped into the infiltration system.
Okay, so could, could we see a drawing with that? Because right now, there's, it doesn't show any plumbing going to the house, to the infiltration system, could be just the driveway for all, I don't know, it doesn't say.
Yeah.
So can we get this amended to, to show that, so that we know that it happens?
So we can't, the, with the passage of the stormwater bylaw, can't get a building permit without getting a sign off from engineering, and in order to get the sign off from engineering, you have to present them with the plan that shows what you're going to do.
Have they presented it yet?
No, because you're...
So it's still in the process?
Well, no, you don't present that until you go, you start the process to file for a building, building permit.
Which hasn't happened yet?
Exactly, right.
They, they need approval here.
Okay.
So, or maybe not approval here, but approval here, then they design whatever final plans they need. Is there a way of sort of accelerating the stormwater planning?
I'm not sure, but I can look into it.
Because that was a concern by two butters now, or two neighbors, and it doesn't have to be the final plan you're submitting to the town, but an understanding to show what you're planning to do, rather than having them, required to them to, you could read the bylaw and understand it.
Yeah.
But not... But not, not everybody can. So that's sort of another suggestion.
John, can I ask a question? So just to help us understand this lot, it's somewhat complex. Is the the house where there's the new development being proposed high and the neighbor is low?
Yes.
And do we know approximately 10 feet, 5 feet? And are there any retaining walls?
There's no retaining wall.
Nothing shown.
And I'm not sure the distance. It does have some elevations on the plot plan there that that's part of, I don't know how to read it, so I couldn't tell. If I had to guess, I'd say.
We probably can't hear you, unfortunately. The folks at home. These micros don't, they just record.
They're recording.
So I was just going to say, if I had to guess, it's probably like maybe three or four feet elevation. So and it's right directly between the two houses. And so that's part of the concern. The the whole street is sloped coming down and the lot next to us is level. And then it slopes down three, four feet to ours. And then on the other side of us, it slopes down another three or four, whatever, feet to our other neighbor here who would like to speak as well.
Sure. Sounds good. Okay.
Well, did I answer your question, sir?
Thank you.
Is there a proposed change in the elevation? Can you just help us understand the existing conditions to the new?
We can ask Mr. Birelli to talk if you you, he can address any of those things if he's there.
Well, certainly I would have him comment as well. But just looking at the plan, it does not look like there's any grade changes on the, on the plan. And I'm looking at, it looks like, so the the elevation sort of at the side of the proposed house is it's like it's about 188 and then 187 is about the property line. And then the next one, 186, is onto the neighbor. So basically, the difference between the area that's sort of between the proposed house and the property line to then the other side of the property line does look like it's about a two-foot, two-and-a-half-foot difference. So there's a slight, slight slope there. And that's over a distance of at least 10 feet. So two feet over 10 feet. That's a, it's a noticeable pitch, but not a.
And also, George, I think the comments have been that there's a question about large trees and removal, trees and impervious surface. So we're getting the sense that they could have, you know, some concern. So so I I think that's something that that needs to be reflected and discussed with the neighbors.
Do you want to add another comment?
Yeah, I just, I would, when I looked at this plan, the site plan, I I had the same comment, like, why is it 20 feet between the garage? Why are you pushing this thing so close to the neighbor? Sorry. Why are we pushing this thing so close to the neighbor more than it is now or less than it is now? When there's so much space, why do you need 20 feet between the garage and the house proposed? I think fire control only requires 10. So if you could shorten that up, you could save the tree and move the house further away from the, from the neighbor. And it's a large tree. It's like almost 30 inches diameter. It's a beautiful oak tree. And right now, it's about eight feet from the house and it's fine. But if now if you move it six feet closer, I think it's six, no, I'm sorry, it's four feet closer, you're going to kill the tree.
Or they're going to take it down.
Or they're going to take it down. Well, they'll take it down or they'll kill it either. So I'm just trying to advocate a cooler environment. Who's been walking around on the streets these days and the sidewalks? Has anybody? Have you been walking in the shade or in the sun?
My dogs walk in the shade.
What do you prefer when you walk your dog? Okay.
They're in the shade. I'm on, I'm on the ground.
Trees provide shade and keep, help keep things cool. So we're trying to keep our trees, we live downhill. And the more it rains, the more water we get in our backyard and the more likelihood of our basement flooding. So I'm trying to minimize that if I can. So if we just move it over, we save a beautiful tree and we make our neighbors happier.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
My name is Amy Kikala and I live at 293 Brookline Street. So just to the left of the Gravlins, two doors down from the proposed house. And my concern, again, has to do with water. And my, my guess is that that is all ledge. And you, I know the house across the street from this one had to be blasted. It was so much ledge. I'm really concerned about, first of all, are they going to have to blast? Do you know if it's?
I have no idea.
Okay. So that's, to me, that's a real concern. And, you know, and there will be that much more runoff. And I I know that they're supposed to capture and and, you know, collect it. But one inch of rain is kind of a small storm these days. I know that's the law that was passed. But, you know, I feel like we've had water problems. We're, we're dealing with it. But we're concerned about, you know, if they have to, if it's ledge, that water's going to just run right down.
So here's the, yeah, we're all dealing with this rain and the hundred-year floods are every single week, whatever. But here's the problem or the concern and sort of the focus. And Mr. Junta said in the beginning, as of right, they can build a much bigger single-family home wherever they want it. And any of these issues, and if they have to blast, they're going to blast the slope, the encroachment, the trees, whatever. So the reality is anybody is going to have to deal with that. The question is when you have an applicant coming in who may not have the right to do this as of right, all right? It's an opportunity to modify and make something that everybody is a little bit happier with. And that, that's what we try to do here is get people to talk and work things out. So you're not going to sleep worried and you come out of your house and you're reasonably happy. I can't say you'll all be happy of everything. And sometimes you want things to status quo. But things change. In my street, we have this big huge house. As a matter of right, they blasted. No idea what they were doing because they have the right to do it. And that's sort of the fundamental issue that Howard talked about, what the building inspector says. If you have a variance, you know it's a change from the general zoning district. And the modification or expansion or transfer or change of that is, this is conducive. This is helpful for the community. So.
I guess I would just ask that, you know, when they have a containment area for water, that it goes maybe a little bit deeper and collects a little bit more. And that's, that's what I would ask. You know, I think that we're, we are downhill and I think we're significantly below, you know, where this house is.
And this is a new, newer bylaw. This is this, this is two years. So, you know, things have changed in our climate, but this is a, this is not a 1951
Right.
water retention bylaw.
Right. But it's, it's a consequence of a lot of huge houses being built. And, you know, there's a house two doors down from us, the other direction. And it has caused some water problems for neighbors. And, you know, it's, it's a concern. You know, having all the the paved for parking spaces, that's more impervious area.
Well, and that's interesting whether that could be something to create a pervious surface for the four car, four spaces outside. That's something to consider. Your, your, your points have been well taken. Perhaps we can get here from, from the principal there on some of this.
Or or if you want to digest this with him and understand and then perhaps take some names and numbers, have a discussion with the neighbors. And then come back here in August with some revised plans and some thoughts and saving trees and moving houses and one and a quarter inch. I don't know.
So, so, so.
We have a civil engineer in the neighborhood.
So, so, so three things here. First off, just a comment on the pervious, impervious. So right now, the existing driveway, the existing house, the existing garage are impervious and all that water sheds off, goes under the ground. The, the proposed is going to take all the roof runoff, which is, which is equivalent probably about the, the existing house and the garage. And take that and put it into an infiltration system and put it in the ground. So even though you have the driveway area in front as impervious, you're actually going to wind up overall with less impervious because of the infiltration system. So it should be a net improvement. Now, whether or not an inch is, is, you know, whether that does it, I mean, yeah, we all see the, the effects of the weather these days and it's crazy. But, but it should be, at the very least, it should be an improvement. Now, number two, I would like to give Matt the opportunity, if he wants to comment tonight, to to comment. And then number three, it does, I do think we should probably regroup and have some conversations and and then plan on coming back. But that's subject to whatever Matt might have to say.
Okay, so is Mr. Birelli in Zoom world?
Is a hand raised? I'm remote. I'm promoting, promoting him as a. Yes, he's, he's promoting. Okay.
There's another neighbor. Neil with his hammer.
Yes.
We'll ask for other people as well, but. No problem.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. How are you?
Very good, Mr. Birelli.
Good. Thank you. I've been taking some notes. So just a couple of comments. The garage, the way it's situated, the original plan had a driveway that went back to the rear of the property and had the garage situated in the rear. And thinking about runoff and pavement and all those issues, we decided to get rid of the long driveway and then put the garage towards the front so you don't have so much impervious pavement. That would be, I think, an issue for the neighborhood. As George mentioned, everything will have to go through engineering. We will have a drainage plan and make sure that all runoff is captured on site. Looking at the site right now, I think there may be room to move the, the house over. Just still has to be a good flow of the house. But I might, I'm going to talk to my engineer and see if we can move that closer to the garage. The idea, as Mr. Junta said, was to really give these people yard and patio when they came out of their side entrance. But I can see if we can do something that would alleviate the concern for the neighbor as well as make it a usable yard for them. So I'm happy to look at that issue.
Do you know whether it's ledge under the house, under, on that property?
I don't. And the funny thing about ledge, not to get too technical, it can be one area and then you can go through a lot and it can't be there. So we'll only know what the ground is once we get into the ground. I will say whatever the material is, we'll have to remediate as far as drainage is concerned. So that will be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir? No, I, I think it would be best to ask questions here. Mr. Birelli heard those things. I think they're going to come back and address the other issues. You're talking about screening, trees, tree removal, four spaces in the front, the slope, the, the, the size of the retention. And I, I don't want to put Mr. Birelli on the spot right now. He has to look at plans and think of what he has to do. We're not going to decide tonight. We're going to bring this back for August for a hearing, continue to the hearing and allow you to all to talk about it and see if you can get more of a consensus on it. But I think the developer is amenable to making some changes. And the big one, I think, is to hopefully move it over the way from your property line.
And save the tree.
Anything else? I, I have someone else on Zoom who wants to participate. Is someone else with a hand raised? You said?
Yes.
Here's another neighbor.
Well, I guess it's not letting me turn on my cam. Oh, there it is. Sorry. My name is Neil Alper. I live at 245 Brookline Street. By the way, is it Brookline Street or Brookline Avenue? The, the letter we got from you says Brookline Avenue. I'm just curious. After living here for almost 40 years, I always thought it was Brookline Street. So any case, my concern, and it was just actually addressed by Mr. Birelli, is a safety issue of placement of that garage. And it sounds like a driveway that's two cars wide. Is that, and it, my concern is that was raised previously. Brookline Street is a heavily trafficked, not only in terms of automobile traffic, but foot traffic to the Mitchell School. My house, when I added a garage to it, I had the option of, and I'm a little bit further up the hill towards Mitchell, had the option of making it a double-wide driveway or a single driveway with a little turnoff. And I, and there, there aren't any, well, I shouldn't say, there are relatively few double-wide driveways, at least in our, this stretch. And I'm sure most of you drive down Brookline Street at some point in time. And it's going down a hill. The cars are going quite fast, much faster than the speed limit. It's a curvy area. And, you know, if you're going to have a, a two-car-wide driveway, you're just increasing the likelihood of problems with trying to back out onto the street when there are kids there, both in the, in the early morning and in the afternoon, because the sightlines are not very good. So Mr. Birelli had just mentioned the possibility of putting the garage behind the house. And it seems to me that way he could have a single-lane driveway that comes out from behind the house and minimizes the risks of automobile accidents of getting onto Brookline Street and or dealing with young people, children bicycling down because those kids do get on their bicycles. There's nothing stopping them between Mitchell School and Manning Street. And they are moving quite rapidly going down that hill. The wider that driveway is, it seems to me, the more dangerous it's likely to be for these young people. And as I say, for coming out into traffic. And I think it would be something to at least consider of making that driveway, not a double-wide driveway, if I understood it correctly. And I apologize, I haven't been able to get down to look at the plans exactly, but it sounded like it was going to be a two-car-wide driveway so you could just back out. And I think it's a safety issue that I would like Mr. Birelli and others to look at. And I really think it's potentially a considerable safety issue that ought to be addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir, you wanted to come back and say something? Okay, okay. So, so anybody else here for comment? Anyone else in Zoom? If not, we'll probably proceed. Wanted to make sure anybody who's sitting here for two hours has a chance to speak tonight. You have to speak, if you'd like to come up, you have to use the microphone. You have to introduce yourself and you have to be on TV.
I'll face this way. Claire Franks, 304 Brookline Street. I'm the DM over here, the civil engineer, and I cannot read the plans. But I just want to say I appreciate that we have this meeting. And you know what, Matt, I appreciate you being on the Zoom and this gives us an opportunity to make a difference. And that's kind of, we're all good neighbors. We all get along in our area. And I think the one thing we have in common is the wet basements. And it's a problem. And I've been in my home since 92. So I can tell you where the bottom of the slope and the sump pump goes when the rain comes. And we've had more and more of that. So thank you.
You're welcome. George, anything else to present tonight?
No, I think, I think that's it for tonight. I think we'll have to go and meet with the neighbors. And I'll have to talk with Matt first and we'll see about, see what we can do to address some of the concerns.
Anybody on the board have a question?
The, no, I, I, I think it's important. I just want to mention and reinforce what John said, that the nature of public hearing is to to hear and listen. And I appreciate the developer's willingness to listen. And it seems like there's room to to modify this in a way that would make it a nice addition to the neighborhood, not less detrimental for this variance plant substitution.
We, we usually have, we can usually address at least some concerns that come up. That, that is what this process is all about. It's all about hearing what people have to say and what their concerns are and what their issues are and try and address them as best you can. Hopefully you come to something that works for everybody, even if it's not exactly what everybody would want and, you know, the ideal set.
Good, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and your participation. We're going to continue this hearing to August 15th at 7:30. So everything's at 7:30. I'm only kidding. Well, tonight.
Do you want to make this later? Do you want to make this later?
I'll make this, all right, 7:35, we'll do it. So, so the point, why I do this is that if a hearing is withdrawn and we have one at 7:30 and we have one at 8:00, then we sit for half an hour waiting and it just makes no sense, not a good use of time. So 7:35, August 15th, 2024. Have a great rest of-
Thank you.
-good month. Motion to adjourn for the hearing?
So moved.
Motion to continue the hearing?
Thank you. I move to continue this hearing until the next meeting.
All in favor, say aye. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.